All right, I'll ask the clerk to take role, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Motion's been made. Coleman?
Sorry.
Seven yes?
Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 50, and these are routine items that will be enacted with one vote unless either a member of the city council or a member of the audience asks to have those pulled for further discussion or clarification. This evening, the only items asked to be commented on actually are Councilmember Moore and I vote no on item six. Are there any other items anyone would like to... Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. What's it?
Number four, probably.
Number four, you want to talk about all of them?
No, he wants to talk about Smithson, which is 4M.
Comodo Firm?
All right. Any others? Team Nunk, we have a motion for the balance, please.
Seven yes?
All right, item 4M is approving the alcoholic beverage licenses and applications for the following, and the M is a renewal application. For the Komodo Club Sake and Sushi at 214 Third Street for a C liquor license. Yes, sir, if you'd come up and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Mike Brandl. I live at 443-59th Street.
Could you repeat that just so they get it on record?
Yeah, no, it's Mike Brandl. I live at 443-59th Street. Many as you know, we've had a lot of problems with Smithson's clubs here in town, such as the beating we had last, what was it, about two weeks ago? What I'm trying to... What I presented to you, Mayor County, is a way of refixing that problem here in this city. It would make it one liquor license, one beer, or one license, one club owner, that's it. So we don't have multiple licensing, like what we have here on some of these. There's multiple licensing from financiers, you know, people who financially back the clubs, or restaurants, or something like that. So that's what I'm trying to move to, is where we have that one person.
All right. Would you mind if I use the piece that you left here?
Absolutely.
And we will submit it and receive and file that?
Yes.
And make it available for the rest of the council to take a look at?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And like I said, it would probably cut down a lot of the violence that we have, and would shut down the clubs that do have violence.
Can we have a motion received and filed?
Move. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
At the last council meeting, we had discussion about probationary liquor licenses, and I believe we all received a letter back from Mr. Lester indicating that the issues with the state statute and that we would not be able to have probationary liquor licenses. But there were some other options that we could go after on a city ordinance basis, and based upon what this gentleman is providing to us and the recommendation or the discussion that Mr. Lester provided to us, I'd like to see us take all of that into account and look at how can we provide more structure and help us address some of these issues, understanding that there still is a... Is it fair to say a high probability that we might run into a little bit of a buzzsaw and be contested, but it's worth pursuing at this point?
I'll be happy to review the item in more detail. Many of the items in the submitted... That Mr. Brandl just submitted appeared to again be license regulations that would be preempted, but I haven't been able to get through all of them in detail, so I'll be happy to do that and report back to council with the strategy for moving forward.
Maybe could you just summarize just very briefly what you're... Because I thought I had the letter with me, and I don't have the letter. If you could just summarize what you thought would be the best approach for the city to take the area?
Well, the specific concern involved a bar where two of the applicants for the liquor license had relatively recent violations of state statute regarding criminal activities, but not of a felony. And our code in providing for what's termed as good moral character under state statute does not... The city code does not provide for taking those into account. It limits it to felony, and so our recommendation would be that we add other items of recency, even if they're less than a felony, but given their recency and/or seriousness, that that would be something council could take a look at in determining whether or not an applicant was of good moral character and therefore deserving of a license.
And I think there was also something in there that said the council would have to make a case as to why we were making those changes, and my guess... Thank you. My guess would be that we could go back historically and look at some specific situations. I'm looking at Bob and what's happened with bars in his neighborhood recently.
That's correct.
Okay.
Of course I did.
That's absolutely correct, council member. We would want to be able to provide evidence for the council to make a finding that, in fact, these types of licensed applicants have led to problems in the past, and that will make it much more defensible when we get to court.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Lester come back with additional information. Maybe it's reviewed at first in a workshop before it comes back to the full council, but that we look at what we can do to tighten that whole process.
Any other ideas? Anybody have anything?
Mrs. Hensley, I'm sure that you include as part of the motion that it's referral to Jeff, but he'll work with our police and CD folks.
It was. And a timeline? Did you want a timeline as well?
That would be helpful to me.
What would... What's reasonable based upon your workflow?
To actually get everything assembled and try to evaluate things historically to get a finding, we're probably looking at a couple of months.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Mrs. Hensley and everybody else, we've had so many neighborhood discussions about this, not only in Bob's Ward, but downtown east and Brian's Ward. We've had a number of discussions. I almost wonder if maybe we wouldn't have some staff meeting and maybe have some of the council members who have some interest in doing so attend at least early on some of the meetings and relay some of our discussions with some of these residents and other business owners that have concerns and see if we can't address a number of the issues at once.
And Court Avenue would be a big... At the top of the list on a lot of that.
We'd be happy to do some of that.
Okay.
Right. Yes.
I think the only thing I would add is I think we need to be cognizant, too, of how to do this in a way that isn't burdensome to people doing a good job.
Right.
Like the issue we had in Beaverdale with the Players Bar and Grill, where they were doing the job and... Or doing a good job, and then the regulations kind of trapped her a little bit. So I'm just afraid that if we get too strict on this, that we're going to be creating problems on the other side, too.
Yeah, I think we have to have a policy in place that is fair, but hopefully protects citizens that... How do I put it? From frequent violations, because I think it's public safety is what we're really interested in, and you point out a good example of somebody that was trying really hard, and I think has a good combination kind of a place, sort of a restaurant, but also serves a little alcohol in there and is sort of doing it on their own.
I'm just afraid, because we're moving the standard down potentially from a felony to a misdemeanor, and that gets pretty broad, and so I just want to be careful that we kind of tailor that to the problem, is all.
Yep. Okay. So should we...
Motion is to refer it for further discussion and recommendations back to City Legal. Set up a meeting with potentially city council members and staff as they're beginning the discussion to allow them to participate in a 60-day time period.
Okay.
Is that right?
Seven yes?
And thanks for your input.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. That completes the consent agenda. I see, real quickly, we have some young people in here. We have some Cub Scouts. Can we have you all stand up? And the leaders as well? And are you a Cub Scout? Okay. Who's the spokesperson?
I guess.
All right. Tell us where you're from and...
61, from Lovey Gated Grace Smithers Church, 38th and Hatch. And most of these guys are from Hubble and Kingo and Hubble and Grease, all four of them.
All right, now, what are they down here doing tonight?
We're learning about citizenship and community leaders and what they do, so Mr. Grease was kind enough to show us around and explain a little bit about what he does.
You bet. Thank you all for coming down, and we have any more of those stamps left? All right. Mr. Grease is going to take a moment, and maybe we've got a stamp for each one of you. Thank you for coming down. We hope that you learn a lot, and good luck. These are our future leaders here, but let's give them a hand. You bet. Thank you. All right. With that, let's move on to ordinances. Final consideration, item 51, amending Chapter 114 municipal code to add streets in five neighborhoods to the list of snow ordinance street designations. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? I think I see somebody right in the front row.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Wendy Lassina, 4155-53rd Street in Des Moines, Iowa. I live in the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. I'm going to apologize if I get a little discombobulated, but I tried to prepare this as quickly as I could. First, I want to cite, if I can, I want to put a few things up here. I made every good faith effort to find out if our neighborhood was going to be added, and on August 22nd, Pat Kaczynska sent me this message acknowledging that three neighborhoods, being the Fairgrounds, Oak Park, and Sheridan Gardens, have requested to be... To join this year. So August 22nd, 2011, folks, that's when this right here, okay? I asked in the last meeting of you, Bill Stowe, and you, Hallie Grease, to tell me what changed from that time to the initial reading to the city council to have my neighborhood, the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association, added. I received no response. I'd still like that response. The only thing that I see that changed is this. That is an email sent to Public Works from an advocacy group president called the Neighborhood Association of Merle Hay Mall. The reason I call it an advocacy group is because their bylaws clearly state that the only people who can vote are the board members. And as you can see in this message, to Public Works, he clearly acknowledges that the board voted. The board voted. There is no consideration on behalf of the people in the neighborhood, no proof of research, that any research was even done. Hallie, Bill, again, I asked you two for that, and you didn't give it to me. Next. Keeping in mind, the initial reading was on September 26th, 2011. Take note of this. September 26th, 2011, at 2:18 PM, two hours before the council meeting, this was posted out on the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association Facebook page. This is the first notification we had that you were even considering admitting us into the program. In that message, Steve Berry clearly... Okay, Steve Berry, I apologize. This is from the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. I can't name him specifically. I do not know who typed this. But in this message, it clearly, clearly states that the Merle Hay Board, Board, Board believes. Where's the "we, the people," folks? Next. Going to refer to September 28th, 2009, city council minutes, when this program was considered a pilot program. It is documented right here in Article Agenda Item Number 46, Roll Call Number 09, Communication 09695, that the pilot program was found to be not viable. Not viable, folks. Not viable. Next communication. Agenda Items, September 27th, 2010, one year later, mind you. With no additional research, could I find any more reference to this program proving that it was a success? However, additional neighborhoods were added to the program, and it was referred to based on the success of the earlier no-parking pilot program. Show me where. Show me the numbers, folks. Why did I get firmer here today? This is my statement. And thank you, Mayor County, on behalf of Occupy Wall Street for allowing them to go to Stewart Park. I've been a part of it and grown incredibly. I do not represent them today, however, they're aware of me being here, but there's bigger issues that they want to hit, and I recognize that, but it doesn't make mine less valuable, and it doesn't make me any less one... Less of 1% of the 1%... Or less of the 99% than they are. As the Occupy Wall Street movement moved into Iowa, I quickly learned the people involved consist of different mindsets and skill sets. The dynamics will be interesting. I've learned a lot about the increasing gap between government and the people, we, the people. I hope you will see... I hope you will see that in this statement. We all have to take responsibility for the gap between government and people. We were, and many still are complacent. Citizens are saying of you, those who were elected will just do as they want, so why even try? My parents and/or your grandparents used to be able to call their elected officials, set up a meeting, and have a direct, open discussion with those elected officials, and the elected officials listened.
Can you point it out?
Many things... I will try. Give me another three minutes, three or four minutes. Many things...
We're going to give you like about a minute.
Okay, I'm going to skip to what I call the human factor.
Please.
The human factor is how we relate to the wants and needs of others, putting our wants and needs aside. In Occupy, I've watched many great speakers compile big numbers and big statements and great speeches, just as I've watched you elected officials do. Terrific, you're smart. They're smart, too. Those of us that are not as smart as you want to bridge that gap, part of... And we also want to bridge the gap and become a part of the process, rather than a body in the crowd or a number in the census. Maybe, just maybe, those of us who are not... Skip that if you're going to stop me, because there's one other thing that I need to point out. Hardship imposed. The implementation of this program is going to impose a hardship on the neighborhoods that are in it. In the previous one, right here, there were 11 snow events last year. Of those 11 snow events, only five were citywide. Those people in those... In the other neighborhoods that are not in this program were neglected for the other seven events. But it's the same tax dollar. Same tax dollar, Mayor County.
Wendy, Wendy, thank you for your input. I've got to ask you one question. Do you have a petition signed by a whole bunch of people that don't want to be part of this program?
No, I don't.
Our experience up to this point is the neighborhoods that have had it, they find their streets cleaner, they find them done quicker. Now, I'm not positive that they're saving as much money as was put out, because I haven't seen all those numbers. I'm just telling you the feedback that we get from the citizens. Now, if it's something different than that, and you have a petition to that effect, I'd like to have it, and we'll put it in the record. If not, we'll take your testimony as your testimony and leave it at that, and then I'll ask Mr. Stowe to come up and rebut, or at least explain some of the pieces that you have. Would you like to submit those, too, Wendy, as part of the record?
I'd like to submit the whole statement that I wanted to read.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Is there anything else you'd like?
Whatever you have, we'll take it to receive and file. I'll move that.
Oh, I do.
All right.
Mayor County, members of the city council, Bill Stowe, Public Works. In listening to Wendy's comments, it seemed that there were two or three that came...
Let's quickly, motion received and filed.
I'm sorry. Apologize, Mayor.
No, we did.
Okay. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Wendy. Go ahead.
There seem to be three comments that popped out as ones that I'm certainly able to comment on. At the end of the day, before I comment on each of the three of them, I have to take some responsibility for the fact that we, that is the Department of Public Works, have put neighborhood associations in a very difficult position. We could have come to you several years ago and proposed a ban on residential parking. Instead, we decided voluntarily to go to neighborhood associations and try to build support. Unfortunately, what we see in this situation, particularly at the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association level, is that there is a significant, articulate group of people, Wendy leading them, that are against it. The board or association group, whatever we want to call them, at our request, took a stand that's become very controversial. At the end of the day, you're the ones who passed the legislation. You were the ones who either decide to support or not to support the ordinance. We, as staff, perhaps made a mistake in the tactic of going to neighborhood associations and unfortunately creating friction for them. Now, with that said, what are the three points that I heard, what's happened since 8/22, when originally, I believe, there were three neighborhoods that we were proposing to you for an ordinance change? Well, certainly, one of the things that happened is we got a nod from a number of different neighborhood associations that they believed that it was acceptable to bring to you to make the final decision. They're not making the decision, whether it's Steve or anyone in any of the neighborhood associations. Clearly, they're not elected to make that decision. We, as staff, know that. We work not only for the people of Des Moines, but certainly for you as policymakers. We probably put them in an untenable position. We, since 8/22, have decided to bring to you five neighborhoods, including the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association, as one of those that we're supporting legislation to prohibit residential parking. And certainly, we've tried to communicate and sell our position about why that's efficient, why that reduces costs, why it makes the streets safer, and I fully appreciate that there's some disagreement, and there certainly is inconvenience, but I have to tell you, the current system is very inconvenient. We receive hundreds of calls for each major snow event about why weren't we able to clean the street better and get there quicker. This will, in our view, very clearly provide us an extra resource of time to be able to do that. Another question that I believe she asked essentially is where's the data? All of our suburbs and every major city in the snow belt that I'm aware of, whether it's Omaha, or Madison, or St. Paul, or St. Louis, restrict parking during snow events to do exactly what we're trying to do here, to provide a more efficient way to remove snow, with the least inconvenience. Certainly, no, not without convenience or inconvenience. There will be inconvenience, but every major city that I know of in the snow belt, including many of which I've lived in, restrict them. All of our suburbs restrict residential parking until plowing operations are completed. I believe another question that she asked really went to, why are you doing this without... Doing it citywide? And we certainly have discussed on a number of different levels, whether we should propose it citywide. We individually went to neighborhood, recognized neighborhood associations. Tactically, again, I think that may be an error. We may be back to you with the idea that this should be a citywide program in future years. Wendy made very clear a council communication where it said not viable for the original pilot on this. I think if you were to read that in context, and Mrs. Hensley, who I know has direct knowledge of this, remember that the real reason that we found the original pilot not viable was because it was entirely voluntary. We went to Waterbury and said, please don't park on the streets. Please help us to do this better. Well, guess what? A number of folks continued to park on the street, and some very conscientious folks didn't, but that kind of please-help-us has not worked in Des Moines. We've tried this for many years. One of the messages that I try to communicate during each snow event is park off the streets. We tried it on a voluntary basis in Waterbury. It did not work. We made it mandatory and found a significant improvement in efficiencies. Now, Wendy and I can argue whether it's a 1% improvement or a 33% improvement. Again, I challenge each of you to go shovel your sidewalk after a three-inch snow with somebody standing in the middle of it. That's exactly what happens when we allow people to park on residential streets at the same time we're trying to plow it. It is extremely difficult. It costs taxpayers much money in equipment and fuel cost and replowing. That is the basis for us coming to you with the five neighborhoods tonight that will add to 16 neighborhoods that are already part of this program. Again, I apologize really to the neighborhood associations who've taken heat on this. Staff probably should have come directly to you. We will not make that mistake in the future in our efforts to expand this program, to restrict plowing in residential areas until the streets are plowed. I hope I at least did on the high points of her concerns. I'm confident we don't agree, but I'll be happy to try and answer any additional questions you may have on this.
All right. Let's see if councilmembers start with Hallie.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for you, Bill, so if anyone else has questions for him.
Ms. Coleman?
I have a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned a couple of times, and I just had adverse reaction to it when you said maybe we shouldn't have done that. I actually think working through the neighborhood associations is the right way to do this. I think proof is that the plan that we're rolling out to these five neighborhoods is a lot stronger than it was when we first implemented it two seasons ago. We've learned a lot. We've had their feedback. They've been partners with us, promoting and educating people, and I'd encourage you to continue on with that. I'm really proud of the program. The other thing that I had a little adverse reaction to, Bill, I say adverse reaction, but I agree with you overall, is that it does create a little inconvenience. I think for most people in... That I know in our neighborhoods, it's more of an inconvenience to pay a lot more taxes to have you drive around these cars and to pay for the damage that inevitably happens when you have plows up against other vehicles. I think we're doing the right thing, and I think staggering it over time so we're prepared for the hardest neighborhoods, where more people tend to park on the streets because they don't have driveways, or, you know, historically, they've been alley-centered neighborhoods. Doing this slowly has allowed us to learn how to effectively create the program to work there. So I love the fact that we have citizens engaged on this, but the fact is, this is a great program. It's providing a better service and saving money to the citizens. I don't know how we say no to a program like that.
Skip, and then Christine.
Well, I, for one, can speak to the efficiency of the winged snow plows. As a supervisor on days for an area of the city, I was skeptical of the use of winged plows until I had a route which was east Euclid, and I had four large plows on it to clear it in one pass. Two winged plows could do it in one pass, so there definitely is an efficiency there. We saw it when we got into the neighborhoods also. Also, I understand what Wendy's saying about problems with parking. I had to deal with people that even lived on snow routes that didn't have driveways and did our darndest try and find somewhere for them to park so that they weren't ticketed and towed. The other thing I'd like to touch on is, Wendy, you're very articulate and very motivated on this issue, and there's a lot of other issues that our neighborhoods deal with, and I really hope that you're a member of your neighborhood and you continue with it. Do all the neighborhoods run perfect? No. Well, you know, are they all governed perfectly? No. These are grassroots people. They're doing the best they can. If you don't like the form of governments in your neighborhood, work to get it changed. If... We've got some neighborhoods where the chair makes the decision. And do I agree with that? No, but we do not control the neighborhoods at that level. So I'm definitely going to support this. I can personally attest to the efficiency of this, and I agree with Bill. Is it 1% or 33? I don't know. In some cases, it's 50%, and others, it's way less, so...
Can I have a 30-second, bud?
No. I just want to echo what's been said up here, because Waterbury was the pilot program, and we did have some issues. I'm not... We did learn a lot from that. And as indicated, I think the program has gotten much better, but the second year that we did the program, when we started issuing the tickets and people had to get off the streets, I received some very challenging calls. I mean, there were people that were upset, and how dare we, the city, do that? But these are the same people that called me last year to thank me for the success of the program. So I understand the apprehension... So, I understand the apprehension and the parking issues. It's all about education and just working with individuals. And there may be, you know, some minor issues at the beginning, but I think the long-term benefit, the long-range benefit, far exceeds the inconveniences that are caused when you see just one or two of those snowstorm events, and how quickly the streets are cleared, and how clean the streets are. And it really eliminates ongoing issues later in the winter when you don't have the buildup of the ice where they've not been able to do the plowing. And that far exceeds some of the inconvenience, I think, of the parking.
Hallie.
I guess I have a few thoughts. Wendy, if I didn't get back to you on an email, I apologize.
Or a phone call.
We've gone back and forth several times over the last four to six weeks. So, I apologize if I didn't get that email responded back to you. But the idea that we're up here as elected officials and we don't listen, I have a real problem when people come up and say we're ignoring our constituencies because we have a different position than you have. I mean, we had a budget forum last week, and we asked citizens to fill out a priority sheet listing their priorities. And at the end of the night, a bunch of people came up and said, "You know, this is tough figuring out what you're going to cut." And I think that if you put yourself in our position on a decision such as this, we've got a neighborhood board that isn't representative of the entire neighborhood, but they represent an advocacy group. And they said, "Yeah, we want to do this. This is great for our neighborhood." And to be honest, you're the only person for the last four weeks since the first reading that's raised any concern to me about this program in Merle Hay. The only person that's emailed me, the only person who's called me with any problem about this. So, just on the face, I've got an entire board that supports it, that is an advocacy group for the neighborhood. And then you hear the Public Works Director say that this is a more efficient program, that it's going to save us money. And from our perspective, I have a tough time seeing how that's not listening to our constituency, how that's ignoring the 99%, as you said. I don't think the 99% is reflected in your position. And I don't, to be honest with you, think your position is the majority. And in the neighborhoods that we have done this, there's been overwhelming support for it. The neighborhoods that have joined it are more than enthusiastic about doing the program this year. And so, I just don't see where you're coming from in that standpoint, from that standpoint.
... survey results, which are part of what I was going to say, but...
So, I'm going to go ahead and move this item, item 51, unless anyone else has anything to say.
You're choosing to ignore the hardships.
I might comment, because last year, up in some of the areas of mine, that it was first time, I had some complaints early on. But once, after they saw what was happening, they were sold on it, and they're all willing to go forward with it this year. Plus, I have two other neighborhoods that wanted to get on last year and is actually going to be serviced this year. And I think it's a real positive move for our city.
All right. It's been moved? Ms. Coleman, sorry.
Seven, yes?
It is 5:05, and we shall start our hearings at this time. First hearing item is item 53, which is on the request from McDonald's Corporation to rezone 3002 Forest Avenue from limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial to revise limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial to allow for revision of conditions defining the site circulation and parking configuration and exterior design of the building subject to conditions. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. We had a discussion on this at the last meeting. Where are we now?
They signed off.
Let's, Michael, could you quickly?
Mayor County, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. At your last meeting, you'd requested us to send out a revised letter of zoning acceptance to McDonald's Corporation. Staff did that, legal department did that, and McDonald's Corporation did return that, signed. So, they have agreed, it's my understanding, to the conditions, which would allow the second drive-through to be added, to allow in addition to the southwest corner of the building, as long as the brick matches the existing brick of the existing building, and no changes to the front or north side of the building. So, they retain the existing architecture and the awnings and that.
All right.
Good talk.
So, that is part of the record.
I'll move item 53, A and B.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Six, yes?
Item 54, which is on the intent to vacate and convey property interest in certain sanitary sewer facilities to the Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by William Stowe and requires six votes. Any comment from anybody in the audience?
I'll move 54, A and B.
All right. Been moved?
Seven, yes?
Item 55, on a text amendment to Chapter 134 regarding zoning regulations of businesses selling alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer in C1 neighborhood retail commercial districts. Council Communication Number 11-664. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the Community Development Director, and it requires six votes. Anybody in the audience to speak on this item?
I'll move 55, A and B.
Mrs. Hensley.
Seven, yes?
Item 56, on the proposed third 2012-year action plan of the 2010-14 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Consolidated Plan, and to continue to November 7, 2011, at 5:00 p.m., discussion on that plan. Anybody in the audience? Any comments on that?
Move. Seven, yes?
Item 57, on a request from Capstone Ventures LLC to rezone 315 Southwest 14th Street from C3B, a central business district mixed use, to PUD, Planned Unit Development, and to continue that item to December 5 at 2011 at 5:00 p.m. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item?
I'll move 57.
Will we have somebody to speak on this item?
Yeah.
On 57?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right, could we have our first speaker, please?
Can I ask a legal question, though? If we are continuing the hearing to December 7, is it appropriate for us to allow?
It's only, excuse me, that's actually a very good question, Councilmember Hensley. It's only when council is setting the hearing and not actually having the hearing. This hearing has been opened, and so it's appropriate to receive. It'll be all part of the record. It's when we're setting, when council is setting a hearing that it's not appropriate to have comment or discussion on the substance of the hearing and the subject of the matter before the council.
So, we're actually going to conduct the whole hearing tonight since we're opening it?
It would be, it would be partial, part of a hearing, and then the hearing would be continued to a later point in time. But the hearing is open this evening.
I think our practice has been...
Just the opposite.
Well, I was going to say that people can only speak once during the hearing. We give everybody a chance. So, if they spoke tonight, they couldn't speak when we're actually going to take it up.
And that certainly would not be inconsistent if they want to speak this evening and then not speak at the next hearing. My understanding is actually that a member of my staff spoke with me about this afternoon, and it's my understanding that these individuals are not able to be here at the next proposed hearing date. And that was the purpose. And I don't know if that's correct or not, but that was what our information was.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, the only observation I would make, having watched this happen a lot, and I'm not sure what Mr. Manning wants to say right now. But generally, when it's published on the agenda that the hearing is to be continued, people read that, and so they stay away, thinking that you're not going to take it up. So, my only observation, not a legal one, Mr. Lester, is that if there's going to be substantive comment, people may have stayed away and then would not have the benefit of those comments, so.
And certainly, if council, if council wants to not take comment this evening, council can do that. Council can say that all comment will be directed at the later point in time.
It seems like it would just be more appropriate to ensure that all sides of the issue can be at the same meeting rather than having it split. So, if they indicated that they have a conflict with the December 5, if that's what the case is, then I would ask representation from council, is there a different date? Maybe the following meeting, the 19, that we could look at that would be appropriate so that all parties could be here? Would that be a satisfactory?
Mayor County, members of the council, Dan Manning, 317 Sixth Avenue, representing Capstone, the company who is asking that this matter be continued on December 5. We would have no objection to that, Mrs. Hensley.
To the December 19?
To the December 19 date. We, you know, from our perspective, we are the ones who have asked for the continuance. We've asked for that continuance because of just the status of this matter. This matter is going before the district court on December 28. And it could be that this hearing may not be necessary at a later date. That's the reason for our request for the continuance. We would ask that you hear everything at one time so that you can make your decision. I think that's a benefit to all of the participants involved, not those who are in favor and those who are opposed. So, if December 5 is the problem, we could make it December 19, if that's the next council meeting. We would not object to it being continued to that date.
Counsel, for purposes of the record, I believe you said that the hearing was set for December 28, but I believe it's October 28.
I'm sorry, if I said December 28, I meant October 28. That's this Friday, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I understand what the council's position is. I will also say that we've had a number of issues where we have, in fact, heard input after continuances, whether it's a taxi cab license or it's some other things, week after week. Although I will say that we didn't allow people to say stuff twice. In other words, if they enter a position or an individual spoke in the past, we really figure that that's their testimony in this matter. But I would defer to whatever the council wants to do. I mean, we have some people that legitimately, I think, have come down and wanted to, I hope that we're not going to hear from every single person this evening, but I think somebody could summarize their position. Be happy to put that on record, but I don't think what we're talking about here is we don't want to have an hour's worth of testimony this evening and then have to come back another night and hear it again.
I guess the question I would have is, is December 5 the problem for the group? Is there the ability to come back on the 19? If that's the case, then we could go ahead and make that change. If that's not the case, I would recommend we put a limit on it.
That's what I'm to guessing.
That's not necessarily the case. I mean, we wanted to come and make a statement every time that this issue has been brought up. We've come to city meetings. We also...
Can you come to the podium and identify yourself, please?
Although, I wouldn't be the one making the general statement. My name is Ruth Schultz. I live in Des Moines.
And your address?
And my address is 820 Seventeenth Street in Des Moines. And I'm here with Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement. You know, we stand against this ICE detention center proposal for two reasons, both zoning and in terms of human rights and what kind of city Des Moines will be. We have some people who wanted to speak here today. If the hearing was going to be happening, we can limit that to a couple of people if that's going to take too long, and the regular, and the other hearing will be continued. But also, I guess, one thing that I think is that the zoning and adjustment board process and this, and the city council process are separate. And I don't see the need, I don't see the reason why we would need to wait to hear on that other decision to be, for the city council to be able to make a decision.
I think there's a request to continue the hearing by the legal representation of Capstone, and that's the reason for the continuance. Now, you folks are here, and I think we understand what your position is based upon what you just said without having a lot of testimony in there maybe this evening. But I think that we understand exactly what your position is. Sounds to me like you're against it for zoning reasons and against it for other human rights or other interests. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a letter with some signatures. We'd be able to present that.
Would you like to put that in? We'll just receive and file that. Would that be good? All right, why don't you go ahead and do that?
I'll move to receive and file the letter and the signatures.
Thank you. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, so, the motion, I think, is to continue till Dan, 19?
We would, we would, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would...
We're trying to accommodate these folks.
We would prefer that the continuance remain to December 5. But, and I think what I've heard is that the December 5 hearing is not the reason or why these, these folks could be present on December 5. I don't want to speak for them, but that's what I think I just heard.
I think I heard the same thing, but I'd like to...
But we would prefer that it's at the December 5 timeframe, if possible.
We've sort of received the intent of your presence here this evening, but what I'm hearing is, I think, when we take this item up, you would have some representatives down here at that hearing on the 5th? Okay. Why don't we go ahead then and take a motion?
My motion, then, is to continue the hearing to December 5 with the understanding that you'll be able to have representatives here at that time. Okay?
And we've received and filed the information and statements. So, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it very much. Ms. Coleman?
Seven, yes?
All right. Item 58. On council-initiated request to rezone the properties surrounding Southern Meadows Apartments, vicinity of Southeast 8th Street and Indianola Avenue, from limited R3 multifamily residential to R160 low-density single-family residential to PUD, Planned Unit Development, and to continue that hearing till November 21 at 5:00 p.m. Is there anybody here that would like to make a statement on that?
I'll move 58.
58 has been moved.
Seven, yes?
All right. Let's note that the hearings end at 5:20. And let's go back to item 52. Okay. If it's okay, we've got some folks here for item 59. Is it all right that we take that item now?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Item 59 is approving a receipt of an informal offer to purchase 801 University Avenue, formerly occupied by the Top Value Foods, for $1,200,000. Council Communication Number 11-670. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'm aware we're going to speak, but we're here to take any questions if you have them. I'm Barry Griswell, CEO of the Community Foundation, 1915 Grand Avenue, and my friend, Rob Denson of the DMAC. So, we're here to answer any questions you might have. I think the proposal is pretty straightforward. It's the same conditions that have been put forth, it's just the price is different. And as I said in my letter to you folks, we are prepared, have the cash, and are prepared to close in short order.
Anybody have any questions?
First, a positive comment. Thanks for sticking with this, and I know we talked a while back, and...
Two years ago.
It took some time to make it work. I know there's been a group of neighbors and interested stakeholders that have been meeting about, you know, the DMAC part of it especially, and how the whole building can happen because it's needed in the neighborhood. And those folks should be complimented as well as you guys. Some of them wrote us today and asked a couple of questions about... Could one of you just respond to that? Because I know some of the people that communicated with us are here tonight.
We actually have a letter from Simon Kotran's attorney.
Okay.
Mr. Anken.
Thank you.
And basically, it was an administrative oversight that caused the biannual renewal of his LLC to not be renewed. It was strictly an oversight. It's been taken care of. I can assure you, Mr. Kotran has businesses and is operating throughout. This was an LLC that was set up specifically for this project. It was set up in 2009, and just inadvertently, the time went by without the attorney filing the renewal.
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to Mr. Coleman's and then perhaps Mr. Lester would want to add to it. I simply want to say this, and that is that this evening, what you're basically doing is receiving, filing, referring it back to the city attorney's office and to my office to prepare all of the legal documents that are necessary for the sale of property. I believe in that process, counsel is required to hold a public hearing, which we will do, and then bring that back. So your action tonight is not the final action. All these issues with regard to title and Mr. Kotran's status as a corporate entity, all those have to be fleshed out and detailed before you can actually go through that transaction. We have to clearly identify the buyer, which I understand generally, but that has to be detailed out. That will all be done when we bring it back for final action, at which time then you would have that information. How long do you think it'll take? I think from our standpoint, we're ready to go as soon as the necessary paperwork can be assembled. I've been assured by Mr. Denson and Mr. Griswell both that they are, they've got documents prepared on their side of the equation, so as soon as we can do our work.
Our attorney has drafted all the documents, condo documents. We're ready to go.
I think it's great. I just really thank you for sticking with it and bringing it forward, and it's going to be very positive for the area. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, if I could just ask a quick question. I think the media, there was some confusion that went out. As far as the grocery store piece, is the, that's not going to happen immediately. The financing is still getting put together by Mr. Kotran. Is that accurate?
Well, you know, I think it's a work in progress. Hopefully, the financing would be available at the time we get title and ready to go. Although there may be a delay. He has enough funding now to do the jewelry part and the salon part. It's about 3,000 square feet of the 22,000 square feet he's going to be. He is actively pursuing other funding, so it may happen that the grocery goes in at the same time, or there may be some slight delay, but we're all working toward that end. The Evelyn Davis Center, we've got our money. I think we've actually got our furniture and storage. So as soon as we get title, you know, we're going to, and we're talking to contractors with, the architectural work's all done, so that will start moving immediately.
And to be clear, there's no contingency on him getting financing for us to purchase the building.
Correct.
And he already has a lot of his equipment already in the building, so it's just a matter of getting the final piece to make sure he can open the grocery store. Maybe a month delay or two months or six months, but it will happen.
And that's the way I understood it. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, we've got, we have five semilos of grocery store equipment. It's already been purchased. It is in town. There's a bakery and another semi. It is here in town, so, I mean, it's well invested and well in the way.
Are you driving the semi?
I would have.
All DMAC trucks all over Illinois and eastern Iowa hauling that. We're great partners.
And we do have some of our community partners here to, I hope, to show support, and we appreciate that very much. We've been very diligent in trying to involve the community. We have a community committee that's been guiding us along the way, so we are sure the community is behind us on this one.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to move to receive and file this letter.
All right.
On the whole thing or the letter?
Just the letter.
The letter first, I guess, and I'll give, if you want to have one this time.
Come on up, Terry.
Terry Wells, 1157 Fourteenth Place, Des Moines, Iowa. First, I want to say, to clear the air, my phone has gone off the hook today and my emails, and I'm sure it's been that way for a lot of folks. Personally, I'm 100% behind this project. I've been involved since December of 2009. They've done a great job in involving the community, and the community wants, needs, and desires the grocery store. That is a priority for everyone that has been around this table for the whole time. So I do want to clear the air that the letter was not negative against anything, the project, Mr. Kotran. There are just some concerns. So again, I'm on the community committee and have religiously attended that meeting for the last two years. I'm also on the advisory council of this project, and I think, one, it's great. It's a win-win all the way around. We get a workforce center. We get some retail in there. It helps out the tax base. The two concerns that I have and that some other folks have called me about is, first, the discounting of this down 33% or 600,000. Certainly, we all want it to move forward, but that seems to be a very large discount for the property, especially when we're having these budget hearings and, you know, being money conscious. I know Mayor County and Mr. Coleman have been to a couple of meetings here recently and have talked about being fiscally responsible with this property. I know we need to get it, you know, back on the tax rolls, but still, that's a large amount of money to discount. Secondly, and I did receive a letter, and thank you, Mr. Denson, for giving it to me, and it was brought to my attention, this was something that I did not dig up. Another member on the committee sent it to me, and I believe I emailed copies, so I don't know if you need to receive and file what comes from the Secretary of State, but I'm glad, and I kind of knew that it was probably a paperwork mistake, if something hadn't been filed, it wouldn't take long to get that fixed. So within a few days, it looks like that they will have their biannual report and be reinstated as an active LLC.
Do you want to make that part of the record?
If that's okay.
Yeah.
I'll move to receive and file.
On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
The last thing that I'd like to say is, and in my communications today with many people, I understand the urgency. We've been at this for two years. But I think in this urgency to come to the council tonight, we forgot a big piece. Tomorrow, at Corinthian, we're having a stakeholders' meeting. I believe Mayor County and Mr. Coleman were behind this stakeholders' meeting. We want to have Barry and Rob, Simon, the members of the council there. The community wants to have a voice, questions, issues, and concerns, and so I would ask the council, we've waited two years. If we could wait two weeks to do this receive and file and approve, I know there's a whole process, but part of that process, I believe, is community input, and we've been planning this meeting for like six weeks, and we've been getting the stakeholders together, and I believe that that process is very important, to hear from all of our faith-based organizations in that area town, all our neighborhood associations, our CBOs, and most importantly, the residents who will be supporting the grocery store and shopping there and et cetera. So my hopes are that a lot of things can be flushed out at tomorrow's stakeholders' meeting, and it would hopefully give the council and the partners a much better view of, and I'm not saying anything's wrong, but it would give a much better community view since we have this meeting planned.
Terry, I think what we plan on doing is the official request here is to receive the offer, and then we're going to get all the detail together, and I'm sure they're going to include the input from the group tomorrow night. And I know that both Rob and Barry are going to give a statement tomorrow night and talk about the plans and how it's going to be staged and all that sort of thing, so that everybody knows what we're talking about. This is only, and that's of the business plan, and I think that tonight, however, we're going to, you know, receive and file and refer the manager to assemble all the documents, and part of those documents, I'm sure, is going to be the input from the neighborhood.
Okay. Maybe stronger than that, Mayor, we could ask the city manager or one of his designees in the office to attend that meeting tomorrow night, so we have a direct line of communication. I'm sure, you know, you have plenty of people that could represent the office there, and because I do, I understand what you're saying, Terry, but I actually think tonight's action to make it official makes tomorrow night's meeting even more official as part of the process of public input, and so I think it gets us closer down the road to getting this done if we just make sure that the manager knows that part of the input to his ultimate recommendation to the council includes what's voiced tomorrow.
And one other concern, and I think Hallie brought this up, and I think you'll hear it tomorrow, and maybe if any other community people speak tonight, but that grocery store is a top priority. I mean, I just got an email the other day from, well, it was actually, they came to our neighborhood meeting on Thursday from a group at Drake, and they actually have a map of how far the grocery store is from Cheatham Park, the closest grocery store, talking about a food desert, and this has been the priority for two years. I know it's also been a stumbling block for two years because we've had plan after plan and deal after deal, and, you know, it's been a lot of hard work, and I do appreciate you recognizing Barry and Rob and the community committee because we've all stuck in there, and we all really want this, but when I, when we start hearing, and I think you'll see this tomorrow, that the grocery store is the last piece that will come together. I think that raises some concerns since it's really our top priority is the grocery store.
And Terry, I completely agree with you. I mean, that's all the input I've gotten from the three or four neighborhoods right around there is we want a grocery store. And since I've been on the council, not quite since December of '09, this presents the best opportunity for a grocery store to be in that location. We've looked at other opportunities, other potential developers to come in there, and it's been difficult for them to get the financing piece for a grocery store. And so I don't know that this is maybe the greatest solution. I think it's a great solution. Certainly, maybe we would want to have the grocery store move in day one, but I just don't know that that's feasible, and if we say no to this, we need to have a grocery store. I think it sits vacant for a significant period of time. So I'm not sure what the right answer is, but I don't think turning this offer down is the right answer. And maybe it takes a little more time, and maybe with our action tonight, that presents an opportunity for financing when it's a little more solid.
And I heard what Mr. Coleman said, and so if this is the best move to move this piece forward tonight, I just really want everyone, and I believe you're coming tomorrow, Mayor County, you're on the agenda, so. And I'll be glad that Mr. Clark will be there also, or somebody from city manager's office, but I don't want us to miss the community voice, the community input. And again, the Evelyn Davis Workforce Center has done wonders and really have listened to community all along, so that's my biggest concern.
And with that said, Terry, if we pass this tonight, which I think we probably will, that by no means says that this is a final deal. I mean, if tomorrow at your meeting, things go terribly and the neighborhood just doesn't like the plan, then we'll reevaluate at that point. I don't foresee that being a problem. Probably along your comments is probably what I would expect from that meeting, but this is by no means the end result, so.
Terry, do you mind me asking?
Any other questions?
Do you mind me asking where you came up with the $1.8 million value on it?
When this was originally rolled out, I believe in December of '09, and through the first probably 14 to 16 months, that was the price that had been shared with us at the community meeting and with the prior potential buyer, that he was about $400,000 short, and he was talking about 1.4 million, and there were some discussions about possible 400,000 in TIF or 400,000 in some incentives or whatever. I mean, it's been a while since that offer was on there, but when we started this whole conversation, it was 1.8, and now we're down to 1.2. So, and Skip, to also help along that, I brought up several times during these meetings that the city's been making payments these two years. I would think that that amount should be going down anyway because as we, as the city makes a payment, that 1.8 should be dropping down to 1.6, 1.4, you know, somewhere as you make payments, so.
You do understand that commercial property as well as residential has been devalued quite a bit in the last year or two, and Rick, do we have a current appraisal on that building?
Mr. Moore, councilmembers, two things, yes, to answer your question we do, and I'll comment about that in a second. The first thing is, I think if the council had really wanted to sell this property a long time ago, they could have perhaps found a buyer for something that wasn't a grocery store or the Evelyn Davis Training Center. Frankly, the council has been very insistent on the very thing you're talking about is to have a great use in the building, and I think that's still the reflection of where the city is. I think what we can't say tonight is beyond any shadow of a doubt the grocery store is going to be there, but I'm really confident with the comments from the speakers this evening that that still remains a high priority, and I think it is the high priority of this goal, of this council, to have the grocery store there. With respect to the appraisal, I think early on, as Mr. Moore said and as you said, I think there were appraisals that had the property higher than its current value, but I checked with our real estate division just yesterday about the value of this property, and they got a, they got a new appraisal on this building within the last 12 months or so that pegged its firm market value at about 1.3 million, maybe a little bit over. So the 1.2 million that's been offered to us is very close to the current firm market appraisal for the property.
Terry, thank you.
Thank you.
You have another speaker?
Wayne Ford, 3301 College Grove. I just came here today to celebrate what's going on, and I respect Terry. Me and Terry go back many years when we both was young, and we used to play ball against each other. But this is one time that I, me and Terry's on different sides of the ballpark. I've been here since 40 years. I probably know this community, worked this community more than anybody I know, live in this community, and what I'm hearing is excitement, euphoria. Now, if there's a situation about the nonprofit status, I'm aware of that. Let me go on record, Urban Dreams in 26 years have turned our report in late, and we took care of it, just like that. Anybody that runs a nonprofit or a profit knows that. So I understand the issue, but the issue of the community being concerned, I haven't heard that. I'm in the street. I'm everywhere. So I haven't heard a concern about the value of the building. Right now, we got HOBOs standing in the building. We got, you know, outside, we got trash, we got garbage. It costs $30,000 to put somebody in prison for one year. So let's assume that you are giving us a deal, a discount. Let's assume that. That's three people, it's $100,000. 30 people, it's about $1 million. Let me go on the record. Once the Evelyn Davis Training Center is there, that alone is going to save all of us some taxes. That alone is going to save a lot of people from going to the joint. So let's, I mean, we can co-mingle the store. I believe the store, Evelyn Davis is on my board. She gave me a million, a quarter of a million dollar property on Sixth Avenue. I love Evelyn. But if Evelyn was alive right now and she was here to speak about a question about, well, the value gone down, the value gone up, come on, this ain't West Des Moines. You know the value of Sixth Avenue. You all are doing something for the North Corridor. You have a thing going there. I got people walking my street late at night. I got Tom Urban on my street. Sixth Avenue is the new game in town. Make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I, would it be appropriate to make one closing comment? I don't want to pull all this.
Okay.
Don't tell Wendy.
I just want, I want the record to show that you came out to our community meeting, and the community said to you, we want this Evelyn Davis Work Center, and we want to give you input as to how to get it done, because nothing seems to be moving ahead. We, Rob and I met, and we said, let's go to the city and get this damn thing done. So to go back to the community to give input for something that they dearly want and need, I just fear you're going to derail this thing. Let's have a celebration meeting tomorrow, not, I mean, we could get input, but this is not a time to get input as to whether to go forward. We have spent two years building support for this. The grocery store will become a reality, so, anyway, I just can't let this.
That's our purpose, Barry. Thanks for you underlining it. Do we have a motion?
You have a speaker?
We have another one.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Carr. I reside at 1105 Fourteenth Place in Des Moines, and I I reside at 1105 Fourteenth Place in Des Moines, and I'm here to celebrate this opportunity. And I know even longer than two years ago that there's been many people that have talked about the opportunity for a grocery store and a vision for a workforce center in this community. I applaud the community, Mr. Denson, and Mr. Griswold for hanging in there and for really allowing the voice of the people to be heard. On many instances, that does not happen, and sometimes we as community people are not the easiest people to get along with or to work with. So tonight, I celebrate them for allowing that to happen, and I think what I'm hearing is we're accepting the receipt for the offer at the 122. Get the feedback and consider that, but we have this man's word, and somewhere along the line, we have to learn how to trust and work together, and they have proven themselves to be trustworthy. And I just wanted to go on, on record saying thank you, and the people that have worked so hard to really bring it to a reality, so let's do it.
All right, thank you. You don't want to rebut that, do you, Barry?
I want to say it too.
Thank you. All right, we have motion.
I will move item 59, and I think you're on the same page. You're both after the same end goal, and so I don't think there'll be any problems.
Seven, yes.
All right, let's go back to item 52.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, Barry, and all the neighborhood people that came down on that item, thank you. All right, item 52 is a request and sort of direction of council as a follow-up on the discussion that was had on October 10th, council meeting regarding compensation for the mayor and council members. Mr. Coleman, do you want to give a report of that committee?
I would be happy to. We did meet as requested. It was Mr. Mahaffey, Councilwoman Hensley, and myself, and we had a, a good discussion. I thank the city attorney and city manager and city clerk, were all there to assist us and take notes and advise us on any of the legal discussions that we had. As you know, before us, we had an issue of both the merit and the, the actual compensation that we might consider and the process for getting there. I think Mr. Lester was helpful in advising the committee and I think to all of us, the, the way in which we'd have to go about that in the closing week, because it is an ordinance that requires three readings at three different city council meetings or a waiving of those readings, which would require a six-sevenths vote all before October, all on or before October 31st. And because of that, I, I think the committee had had enough conversations with other people, and we realized there wasn't support for that kind of process of special meetings, and therefore we submitted a written recommendation that did not recommend any changes at this time, but that we did believe that the evidence that we saw through the survey that was done of other cities in Iowa around the Midwest justified a full review of that, and our recommendation is that rather than tinker, you know, a couple of percent here or there, at this time, we would do a review of that. That was unanimously accepted by the three of us, Councilwoman Hensley, Councilmember Mahaffey, and myself, and to report back next summer as to what an appropriate level of compensation is primarily for the mayor. I will just tell you that we looked at more than just salary, but compensation. There are issues there, I think, that many members of this body have about that level and the expectations that we have for the mayor. My written review of the meeting shared clearly the majority feeling of us that the charter of our city calls our mayor a part-time mayor. We support that. Nonetheless, the expectations of the citizens are that the mayor is in a lot of places. I shared with a neighborhood association last week, when they were asking about this, we had this discussion about whether or not the mayor, you know, worked more hours than what he was being paid for or not, and I told people the story, which surprised me, I didn't realize this. We met that day, the mayor had a meeting here about 2:00, then we had a meeting of the city council. He had to sign all of his documents and leave the office down here at 8:30 or 9:00, I think. The next day, we got a text, those of us on the city council, from the city manager saying, the mayor and I just made a presentation, answered questions, and we just got a $12.5 million grant from the IDOT. They had already been.
Correct, I do want to make, it's 12.7.
12.7, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Well, the, the interesting part of that story is, by first thing in the morning, they were already in council bluffs, and I think any of us as citizens would say to ourselves, hey, wait a minute, if the city of Des Moines has $12 million, 12.7 million on the table, our mayor darn well better be there. And, you know, that's a hefty expectation that we have for the mayor's position, and right now at a, you know, a part-time salary, I think there's a, a support for reviewing that and addressing that, and, you know, my personal opinion has been that the sooner the better, but in this case, I don't think it's realistic that we do it before October 31st and maintain the support of the community by calling special meetings and so forth, and that's the recommendation of the committee. So I would move to receive and file that written communication. We can still discuss, but I would like to receive and file that communication with the committee.
All right, on the paper, say aye.
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 Post, it's receive and file. We have a citizen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. I come today both on behalf of Des Moines neighbors and Northeast neighbors. After the last council meeting, the board members from the Des Moines City Council here talked about the issue of the mayor's salary, and so we began canvassing neighborhood leaders throughout the city to get their opinion as to whether or not this is the appropriate time to look at raising the position of mayor to a higher salary level, more in keeping with the kind of work that Mr. Coleman just talked about. It was with great disappointment, then we read in the paper that the thing was being pulled off without basically any type of public comment, any chance for public input from the citizens or the leaders of our neighborhood associations. At the time when we read this in the paper, we had in excess of 30 neighborhood leaders that already signed a statement in support of giving the mayor a larger salary, the position of mayor. And again, we have to note that, this is what we're talking about is the position of mayor, not an individual particularly, but it's in keeping with what the mayor does, a mayor does, and the expectations of that particular position. We had over 30 at that time, and also in the course, at least in my conversations with people, I had, out of that 35 that I know of, only two other people that went asked that probably not at this time, but it sure liked to look at it in the future. One of the things that's disruptive to our concept and disturbing is, again, the lack of public comment through this process. If this is something that was really seriously considered, this committee should have been meeting months ago with this very thing and had the position going through and having public input in the process. And so it's really disappointing that this was waited to the very last minute, requiring this kind of thing, and therefore being held hostage to maybe one or two members who did not want this hour to go through. Mr. Coleman, you said earlier that you really appreciate neighborhood and association commitment, whether it be on the snow routes or this type of thing, and yet you've done nothing as a council to seek input from citizens regard to this very important matter. You've asked citizens to come to budget hearings, three of them over the last week and two this week, and ask them to talk about how money's being spent in the city, and yet you've not even put that on as one of the aspects of what we're discussing as part of the citizens here. That's disappointing. We could talk, and I could talk about all the reasons why this should happen, and yet it's obvious that because of the timing sequence, it's not going to be happening and being stopped through this process. But there's some questions which I think you have to answer. First off, why did the committee wait so long? If it was really important, and I've been talked about for months, I've heard about the possibility for months, why did you wait so long to do it? Why was there a vote taken behind closed doors that says you already made your decision, you come with that decision being made? Because you already know that you've talked to each other and it's just not there. Again, not allowing for public input or citizens to be able to talk about the issue. To talk about the fact that you're going to come back in July, I believe that was a quote from Mrs. Hensley in the paper, come back and look at it again this summer, July, is a smoke and mirrors thing. We all know, all of you sitting up there know that you cannot raise the mayor's salary for four more years. That's a reality. So to talk about the fact you're going to do it in July is a joke, because you said they can't do it under state law. And for that matter, you're not even discussing the fact that the mayor will be taking a cut as a result of your inactivity to be able to deal with issue. And so there's going to be a cut also involved in the process. Again, disappointment from the standpoint of many of the leaders that I have talked to, neighborhood leaders that I've talked to, about how this whole thing looks from the standpoint of the citizens. I don't know who you guys have been talking to, you think that you're in trouble if you talk about raising the mayor's salary, but I'm sure not getting it, neither the other neighborhood leaders getting it throughout the city. There is overwhelming support that we want our mayor out doing the things that he is doing, that he is out there catching 12.7 million here and another million there and going to the Capitol and representing us, and going to the state, the national Capitol and representing us. We are a capital city. We are on the cutting edge. It's about time that we put the position in the level disposed to. Now we've got to wait four years. Now, if you're going to wait till July to talk about this, so be it, but if you're going to take that much time and you can't do anything for four years anyway, why don't you get a citizens committee to actually ask the citizens what they believe and stop talking about it behind closed doors? Thank you. I do stand available answering any questions about the feedback that I received.
Oh, by the way. I would like to respond just real quickly, Marty, because I, I think it's important for the citizens to know. I, I do value public input. This is the third time it's been on our agenda in the last five weeks here. Any citizen could come talk. We scheduled a committee meeting, we posted it, it was open to the public, it was not done behind closed doors. Nobody did come from the public, but it was posted, and we would have welcomed public input there as we always do. I, I, I understand that we have a disagreement on this and about how to move forward, but what I don't want is for people to assume that somehow this was done behind closed doors or in secret, and I quite frankly resent the inference when you know the facts are not supporting that case.
Then explain to Mr. Coleman how you were so supportive of that earlier and then went so against it later.
I, I don't think you have any idea if I went so against it or if I was ever supportive of it. I've put in writing what I would support, and I have all along. I don't think that we should raise the mayor's salary with five days before the deadline to do so and force the mayor to be the deciding vote on his own salary and to call two special meetings to get it done. That's the only way to do it, and I think it cast a shadow on my friend Mayor County, and I don't support doing that to his reputation. That's the only way to get it done.
Which leads me back to the earlier discussion. Any other questions?
Which earlier discussion are you referring to?
The idea that. Where this should have been done much earlier and with a recommendation from the committee much earlier. We waited till right now for a recommendation.
See, because I find that a bit, and, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. The committee didn't come forward till it was put on the agenda a couple meetings ago, last meeting.
Last meeting.
But as a council, we did vote on this, not I, right before I joined the council. The council voted on this as a group. So to say we waited.
You voted on what?
To reduce, you, you were talking about his reduction in salary taking effect. We as a council voted to take a reduction in salary. He voted on that as well as the other council members. So the idea, and, and which has not taken effect to date. So the idea that we held off till the last minute, I don't think is true. The vote already took place two years ago and hasn't yet taken effect until after this election.
And I would just like to add to that discussion about the timing, Marty, because being a member of the Personnel Committee, we were discussing, and the only thing that we discussed were salary adjustments for our direct reports. At no time in any of those Personnel Committee meetings did we ever discuss the mayor or the council salaries. Zero. And what I find really disturbing based upon your comments is the fact that you're claiming we're waiting until the last minute. My question for you and others would be, the window of opportunity was not the month of October. You could go back to June, and any member of this council, the mayor included, could put that on the agenda. That has never in the history that we've dealt with personnel issues been a responsibility of the Personnel Committee. We have not looked at it that way, and if you go back in the history and look at the action that was taken, it was always because it was put on the council agenda because this is the time that we need to discuss it. So the question that I get and I'm responding to are, why did we wait until the month of October, after papers happened to be filed, that we now have this discussion? So I really take issue with the fact that you're accusing us of not doing this timely when every single person at this council table could have put it on the council agenda back as early as May or June, and the Personnel Committee has not been asked to take the lead on that. Previously, we had absolutely no discussion in the Personnel Committees about the mayor and council salaries. I was as completely caught off guard as anybody else was because there were other council members that had had some discussions about it, and maybe that's what you're referring to, but I was not a part of those discussions. So don't start casting and making comments like that when you don't have all of the information and you weren't in the meetings, and they were open meetings, particularly the last one.
The standstill is, folks, majority of the people that we've talked to believes it's time for it.
Do you have a petition?
Pardon?
Did, do you have a petition?
No, we stopped getting it once we heard it was being pulled off the table. I mean, I do have one, I've got 30-some signatures, but obviously, at this point, we'll wait till, be happy to wait till July and get, weigh it into process, hope that you will actually put that on your calendar, and I would hope that you would have a lot more than a chance of then some citizen input through that process.
You know, this is only brought to our attention as one council member brought it up to us, and that's when we start acting, once the council member brought it to us, and that's when the committee was assigned to take a look at this, at, what, two meetings ago, was it? I think it was.
Actually, two meetings ago, we brought it up without clear direction, last meeting, because there was no one responsible for it. It was assigned by the council to the committee.
So, so, you know, maybe it's an oversight by a lot of us until it was brought up by one council member, and that's when we started looking at it.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to make a statement on this. Number one, I've heard this tossed around amongst several council members for about six months. I'm going to take a little blame on this. Out of my ignorance, I didn't know what it took to increase anybody's pay on this city council, and when I finally sat down with Diane Rowe and Jeffrey Lester is when I found out the narrow window we came down to, there was, there was no underhanded movement here to wait until after papers were filed for the mayor or the council so that the raise would come after that. I'd also like to say I've gotten seven emails and phone calls from residents that said no to it, and they all had multiple reasons to say no. What bothered me were the ones that were saying the mayor was leading the charge on this, which he has not led the charge on it, claiming he wants 91,800, $91,865 or 99,000 is his goal. The, the residents need to know, the mayor has stayed back and stayed away from this. I have heard from people, I've not heard one person say that the mayor should be taking a reduction in pay. In fact, if it was brought up, they were appalled when they heard he was in line to take a reduction in pay and that that position was. The vast majority of people that I've talked to and run into was, they were shocked when they read in the paper what the pay of the mayor's position is, and they thought, yes, it should be increased.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I, I like you. I do. I mean, you're a great guy.
I appreciate your saying that, especially with a University of Kentucky hat on, of course.
Great, great in basketball, but, you know, I have to say this, and I, I've looked at some of the stats that you guys posted out there on what some cities are paying their mayors. I'm not sure that.
You'll have to give your name and address again for the record.
Mike Bramble, again, 443 59th Street. I'm sure, the one thing I didn't understand in the whole thing was, is that a part-time basis or is that a full-time basis on those salaries? Yeah, that's what I wanted to find out.
I, I think I can clarify that, and I appreciate our city clerk and our human resource department for putting that stats together. The committee actually didn't do that, we just requested it, but there are columns on that grid, if you saw the whole grid. But there are columns on that grid, if you saw the whole grid-
Right, yeah.
-that says whether or not they're full-time or part-time. And I think the other important thing to go to is to see whether or not they have a form of government like we have, where you have a strong city manager. You know, many of them have a city manager that's making way more than ours does.
Right. Well, and you know, like you just said, he just got 12.1 million dollars for us. I mean, why can't we just move to his position to a full-time position where he can actually be here where we are? Yeah.
The law.
Well, I mean, I understand it's law, but I mean, isn't there a way we can change that to where he could be here a little bit more-
You can lead the petition drive to go out and get signatures to change the form of government.
Okay, I've got time now. How's that? I mean, you know. But, yeah, I mean, I think, I think that if he's doing the work he's supposed to be doing, then why not bump him up, you know, where he needs to be at? I mean, because I know that we're in a crappy economy and a crappy budget, but I think probably somewhere along the line, we can not say, Rob from Paul, you know, pay Peter, we just can't do that, or Howard had said. But, I mean, you know, I think, I think with 12.1 million dollars there, I think we could probably cut a little chunk there, you know, and say, here you go, you know, compensation-wise. But that's just my opinion.
I think what you're saying is, if you've got a good employee, you should compensate him accordingly.
Absolutely, sir. I mean, I've worked, I've worked in the printing industry for 15 years. You know, I was up to $22 an hour, you know, at one point. And then my company got sold out to a Chinese firm, and guess what? We got stuck back down to about $12 an hour. So, I mean, you know, if we're doing the work, you know, if you're running a press and you're putting out millions of pieces of work out, heck, yeah, compensate the guy. I mean, personally.
Thank you.
Jeff, I had a conversation with you last week about difference between full-time and part-time in the mayor. Could you refresh my memory on that?
Certainly, with any particular part of your memory you'd like refreshed. If the code doesn't actually say that the mayor shall be full-time or the mayor shall be part-time, it's a function of compensation. And clearly, it's an intention of the compensation that it would be a part-time position and what council member Coleman was talking about in terms of the form of government with the council manager ward form that Des Moines, the city of Des Moines uses, that would be the contemplation, and that's the reflection in the salary. But the salary can be changed so long as it's done in compliance with both city code and state statute.
Any other memories need to be refreshed?
So I'll move to receive and file the comments.
Okay. One of the things that I would, I would hope, it's interesting, I think we ought to have that larger discussion about compensation for the mayor and for the city council. I think that one of the things that I have discovered in the last eight years in this job is the citizens' expectations of the mayor. And it is interesting to receive a call at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, and I'm sure city council members get the same thing. But I think that we, under our form of government, the citizens elect this council and the mayor. We hire the management, and then they report every one of the staff to generally all those managers. But the people that the citizens hold accountable are the elected ones. And I have discovered that their expectation is that we're on the job as those elected officials 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And it doesn't seem to matter if you're on vacation or not. Latest technology allows folks to get a hold of you when you're out of town or you're in town. But I think that this city and this council has worked very hard, and we've received lots of proper recognition for that. And I think the expectation of the citizens is that has been raised a lot by the work of this council. And as we think about the future of this city, I think that we, my expectation moving forward, whether I'm sitting in this chair or somebody else is, I want to see somebody that's out there 12 months a year, 52 weeks a year, representing this city wherever they're called to do so. Because I think it's only by doing that, and as Mrs. Hensley said in the past, being a cheerleader for this city is the way we get ourselves on the map. It's not a flyover state anymore. There's an expectation that the heartland has a voice, and generally, it's coming out of this capital city. And so I look forward to the discussion that this council is going to have around that. The reality is, and we all know, especially those of us that have sat on this council for more than one election, know when these discussions take place and when they come into effect. They don't come into effect where there are any changes made till next year, 2012. And there is a cutoff, and everybody knows what that is. And there's some that resist any discussion around that. But I think we ought to have an open discussion and ought to have it with our citizens. And I appreciate all the input that we've gotten on both sides of the issue. So thank you all for coming down and having your say and making it part of the record. We've had a vote. I think that our next movement is to-
For the health?
Yeah, we need to have, how he usually gives it, let's adjourn and reconvene. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We now sit is the Board of Health. Item one is approving the legal department to proceed with court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. A is 1839 East Grand Avenue, a main structure and a garage structure. B is 2359 East Grand Avenue, it's a main structure, commercial. C, looks like it has been withdrawn. D is 1809 Larned Avenue, it's a main structure and a garage. E is 1989 Southwest 9th Street, it's a collapsed retaining wall. And F is 2821 Southwest 9th Street, it's a main structure, it's again a commercial one. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, could we have a motion? To approve the legal department to proceed with court action on those addresses, A through F, with C withdrawn.
I would so move.
All right. Item two is communication from State Farm Insurance Companies that the insured Linda and Dan Murphy of 1954 East Bell Avenue sustained a fire loss on September 25th, 2011, and a fire escrow is being held. Anybody to comment on that? Seeing none, could we have a motion to receive and file that?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. If we could complete with a motion to adjourn. All in favor, yes?
Just a reminder, Wednesday night, 6 o'clock, our second of three Town Hall forums at Botanical Center. Thursday night, 6 o'clock, the third and last one, also at the Botanical Center this week. So two of them this week, Wednesday, Thursday.
All right. All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Hey, Rick. Are you going to ban that now?[1428.13]